I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 4th. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with our secretary. Cards are available in the livery. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. While the Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. I'm looking at the third row here. Could we have roll call, please?
Chair Merc.
Here.
Vice Chair Quelisi.
Here.
Commissioners Jagiello.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
And one vacancy.
So Commissioner Jagiello, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm not sure if you remember all that.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have three speaker's cards here for public comment. I guess we should take them in order of height, so we'll start with Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to speak on this topic because Tiny Homes on Wheels, because I know it's coming back probably a few times and it's important to me and I just wanted to start the conversation. So anyway, I'll just read it. A rose by any other name is still a rose. A tiny home on wheels is built on a vehicle chassis, is licensed by the D M V, and legally considered a trailer or recreational vehicle. Whether the wheels are on or off, it is still a recreational vehicle which is not permitted in Ojai as a permanent residence. This ordinance, the proposed ordinance, would change that and permit and regulate tiny homes on wheels as an approved type of accessory dwelling unit. Fresno did this, renaming them backyard cottages, and opened their city's residential neighborhoods to them. Fresno is 141 square miles. Ojai is 4.3 square miles. Ojai does not have to do this. We have other options to consider. I do support villages of small homes on foundations as well as tiny homes on wheels. When we first moved to Ojai, I was attracted to the Evergreen cottages, Mallory Way, and cottages among the flowers as an affordable and sustainable way to live. We could recreate this concept on city-owned property with residents owning their own tiny home, making it affordable with the opportunity to gain personal equity. What drew me to these small homes beyond their size was the fact that they were clustered, creating a special kind of community feeling. Ojai could consider variations of this lifestyle if we just take time to look at other options. But we are being pressured now to focus only on the random placement of tiny homes on wheels throughout our residential neighborhoods. Tiny homes on wheels represent a different lifestyle, a home on wheels, being presented as an affordable alternative to anything else now available. But the biggest part of that affordability is finding someone else's land to put them on. That's what this is about. I believe the solution is to create tiny home villages on property owned by the city and not introduce them into residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next would be Chip.
Medium height. So, to follow up, no notes, but basically, I agree. I believe in tiny homes. I think they're great if you do it correctly. And what I mean by that is you make them truly affordable and make it something environmental. Kathy Nolan and I are the only ones in the city that have actually done this. And so, what I'm saying is, if you build low-income housing such as next to my house now currently, it's not homeownership. There's no pride of ownership. If you have something that's rent-controlled, and what I mean by that is if you build a park, let's say, then it has six spaces, a dozen spaces, and then you can control what kind of tiny homes go in it, the people can own the tiny homes and you can gain equity in them. But the city can regulate, you know, what you do there, what happens there, and it's a way, A, for people to own something and they can make payments on it for five years. If they want to move, they can sell it, have a little bit of equity, and it's a starter. It's a starter home. We don't have that in Ojai anymore. Everything's so expensive. So, I'm a fan of doing something like a tiny home village, but the property is owned by the city, so you can control how much the space costs, like a mobile home park. But it's not a mobile home park because it's tiny homes. You can regulate what goes in it. And it doesn't have to be 100 of them. It could be five. It could be 10, depending on the size of the lot. And so, I'm a real fan of the experiment or the case study or whatever you're going to call it behind City Hall. Try that, see everybody likes it, what worked, what doesn't. But I think you could take a couple of parcels around town and you could convert them to something that's very affordable, but also something that somebody could own, which is really important, in my view. So, and I'm happy to consult with anybody, because I've done it.
Thank you, Chip. Could I ask you a question while you're up there? I mean, the Caribbean Outpost is kind of like what people are talking about, right?
It's a different permit because people don't live there. So it's a transient stay. So, much like a hotel, we pay a transient occupancy tax, but regulated the same way in a sense that, you know, you have, for lack of a better term, what you would do, you would build a mobile home park, whether it be gravel spaces like we have or concrete pads, whatever it is, but you build a utility island. So you have sewer, you have gas, you have water, you could have Wi-Fi for the whole property, and then whatever they back into the spot, that's their responsibility. And they have to provide a little bit of insurance for you, you know, that can be sorted out. But the advantage is, you guys can keep the rent artificially low, so it's affordable. So let's say you charged 150 bucks a month for the space and somebody had an $800 a month payment for their tiny home or something. That's not bad, and you're owning it. And then you guys could, you could say, what can happen there, what can't happen? I mean, you could do something, I mean Kathy, it would be amazing. You could do, unlike a farmer's market where you bring vegetables, you could have people that live there and they make stuff or they have things they sell. You could do trunk shows. You know, you could have all these different things going on. But it's a solution, I think, to do tiny homes instead of trying to put them in neighborhoods. Because when you try and put them in a neighborhood, you know, you have neighbors and you have setbacks and all the utilities that you need to get to it. I know if you plugged in 50 amps of power at my house, it would crater my panel, right? So I'd have to go to the pole and get power. It's very expensive. But like-minded people want to be part of a community. So when you put five or six of them together, it's not bad. Anyway.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. And last but certainly not least, it's Chris Silver.
Chris Silver, 704 Park Road. When Wendy was taking me around town like we do three days a week or so, we went by the corner of Montgomery and Grand Avenue, and there's a magnificent oak tree there. And I'm kind of into that because, from my background, but I'll talk about that later. But there was a guy over there and he had around as maybe 12 or 14 inches, and I went over there and talked to him, and I looked up at the tree and I said, "Gosh, it's kind of a shame to have to take something that big out of that tree." And he said, "Yeah." He said, "Look at it." And he held it up to me and he said, "Look, the center part's all dead." I said to myself, "Wait a minute. I mean, did you miss junior high and high school and junior college and college and miss all botany courses?" And I was looking at Wendy and I said, "We might be in trouble here." And the thing that got to me is, I was looking at her and I said, "It seemed to me as I remember, the center part is dead and that's called wood. That's what we make things out of. The outside is the floam and xylem and the cambrian layer and then the bark." And so I thought to myself, "At least I ought to say something to a panel like you," because some of my background years ago, and I'm not trying to be a smarty-pantin, sound like I know something. I was just very lucky to grow up in a big family in Santa Monica with like 80 extended relatives. And my mother's two brothers were lucky enough to get their original contract to do the Disney landscaping project. And then one uncle passed away and the other one stayed there until he was 90, and he did all the parks for Disneyland. So when I got off the service, went down there, I was there one day and working on a oak tree and asking my Uncle Bill, who was in charge, he was calling me Crystal, and I said, "Bill, what's about this, what's the story with all these oak trees?" And he said, he looked at me kind of stern because I was the nephew and said, "You need to read the book by William Hertrick out of the Huntington Garden and he'll tell you what to do." And I said, "Could you paraphrase that for me?" And he said, "I absolutely can." He said, "You don't want to cut the top out. You just want to take the dead wood out. You don't want to take big limbs out unless you have to. You want to guy the tree up if it needs it, or you want to support it, and you want to water it three times a year and keep the water off the truck." And I said, "That's a pretty quick paraphrase on what's going on." And I said, "Well, I like that." And so I thought about it all the time, and I said, "If we're going to continue on the road that we're on with these magnificent trees," I asked him at the same time, "How long would a tree like that last?" And he said, "Well, you could get 150, 200 years out of it if you take care of it." And so I think that's important. And I think it's something that the panel should think about to make sure that we have somebody that's really qualified in this area. The last thing I'd like to say is, when I was down at the park, there was a European company that would come in and core any of the trees that were really, they worried about. And they could take a small 3/8 core and go and tell you what was going on in the tree any place in it without cutting it up, and then they'd make a decision. So that's really what I'm about. So it's green eggs and ham, take no chances, and so it goes. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you. I don't see any other, Mr. Haney, would you like to comment on anything? You're the only other member of the public here.
Not till the end of the evening.
All right. Thank you. All right, we will move on to consent items, which there aren't any, and public hearing items, which there are also none, which brings us to discussion items, which is the Community Development Department priorities. And I understand we're going to discuss this with Mr. Connolly.
Yes, thank you. I don't know if this just coincides with my recent arrival, but it seemed like a good time to, a way for me to get up to speed on things and priorities, I think, anyway. But this seemed like a good opportunity to go over what the priorities would be. Obviously, there's some things itemized here in the staff report. I know for my benefit, a lot of things seem like they've been in the pipeline for some time, and I would say as we go through, like, maybe not only prioritizing, but looking at what are maybe short-term things that could be finished versus midterm and long-term. So this is clearly more of a discussion tonight, but I think it's something to just try to get these things in somewhat of a fixed order, to see what we tackle first, and maybe get some estimated timelines as to how long it will take to get through some of these things, or even identifying resources we may need to complete these. So, I don't have a lot more detail than that. I also would suggest, if there's things that don't appear to be listed here in the staff report that seem like priorities, that those also come up tonight. So, we kind of establish this as a benchmark time for priority setting. So that's about all I had, and happy to participate and help the discussion in any way I can.
Thank you. I'm not sure what the best venue is for this, but perhaps we could just go around the table. Commissioner Powers, could we start at your end?
No.
No? I know Chester's still like halfway between here and Australia. Do you have priorities you'd like us to work on?
Your body's here, but mine... I was in the Middle East, but that's okay.
Oh, Middle East, okay.
I don't know. There's not, I don't see the tiny home thing here, so I'm assuming that because the, yeah, because the city council gave very clear directions of it coming before us so they can get it back in June, I assume it's just on its way, so that was one item. As far as neighborhood planning, I know we did some work on that. I don't know where that stands. There was Sergeant, yeah, it's been a while since we've updated that and did anything with that. Second Unit Compliance Program, I believe, is pretty much done. And yet, the extension, there's an extension out there. Cultural Resources is pretty much done, as far as I understand it to be. And I don't see a whole lot of resources going there. Solar Guidelines, I believe we already approved that. That seems to be done. Water-efficient landscape ordinance also seems to be...
There's some, excuse me. There are some, a little bit of coordination between the 2015 model water-efficient landscape ordinance and our landscape standards, but it's pretty minor.
Right.
You know, I don't know, if I had to give it a timeframe, probably like a couple months max, I mean, to go through it, bring it back, review it.
Without discrepancies.
Right. And it might even be, it might even be less, but I think that would be kind of a fair timeline.
Yeah. Well, and the thing of the updating of the Chapter 8 of the municipal code for cultural and historic preservation, I think that actually affects us more than just about anything in here, because we end up having issues with that particular item more often than not, just because we don't have a clear plan as far as, you know, the cultural and historic preservation, HPC. So personally, what affects us, you know, the neighborhood planning is something I think we can continue. I think it's ultimately important to continue that process, and I would jump to the HPC part of the equation. And that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's from this list.
Bobby? Do you have topics we could discuss?
Well, I would like to add parking onto this list.
Thank you.
Because it seems like all we talk about is parking, and I think that we really need to address the issue of parking, the issue of in-lu fees, the issue of variances, and what our long-term parking plan is for the city, and how we can help make the traffic move more efficiently. I think parking's part of that.
Yeah, part of that is in that in-lu fee that we charge our, some of these applicants, where that money goes and what that's being used for. That came up multiple times.
And then we seem to charge people who have slight use, and we don't charge people who are going to impact the parking a great deal. So there's discrepancy here, and I think there's problem with that, and that we really need to look at the whole parking issue in the city.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Quelisi.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought up parking, and as a follow-up to this afternoon's Complete Streets meeting, I will defer most of my comments to Commissioner Nolan, the mighty Chair of the Complete Streets Committee. But since you have brought up parking, I do think that is one thing where we need to understand, I think, from the point of view of traffic calming, let's say, and in general, making the streets safer for everyone, we should be talking about parking along Ojai Avenue. There are a lot of places where it's not possible right now, and adding those would provide visual barriers that would slow down traffic. And we need to look at bicycle...
That's kind of in neighborhood planning, too. That's kind of...
Well, it could be. Yeah. The city core is a neighborhood all by itself, I guess. So maybe it falls in there. But neighborhood planning is, to my mind, sufficiently vague that we could probably put 10 things under it. And I just wanted to say, yes, parking's a good idea. Bicycle parking is also something that we need a lot more of around the town. And I'll yield the rest of my time to Commissioner Nolan.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Nolan.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm in agreement. The neighborhood planning just kind of felt like it dropped off somewhere, and I think it would be good to bring that back. And I agree with Commissioner Jagiello that the second unit, the cultural resource, solar guidelines were close to being done, if not completed. I already mentioned the water-efficient landscape ordinance, you know, should be reviewed and brought up to date. I also, I know under here we have the Fire Safe Community and we have the Building Appeals Board, but I did actually, and several of us met with a few of the Building Appeals Board members, and what we looked at was, they were, well, there's overlap. Basically, they're looking at structures, but they were also looking at landscape. And then what I observed, after going through some of the city documents, is that we're, as far as I'm concerned, we're missing some things that could be affected in planning, and that would be like fuel modification plans. If you happen to be in, you know, like a very high or a high fire zone, that it should be required in your landscape submittal package. I mean, that's probably one of the most dominant things, but part of that plan also includes maintenance guidelines that are typically turned in. And I'm just saying this from my experience of having done these plans in the county of Intura and county of Los Angeles. So typically, that is included, and I think that's really important. You know, if any of us, most of us have heard, you know, from Cal Fire and different fire chiefs and what have you, after the Thomas Fire and other presenters, that the one thing we can control and the place where we can have the most effect is in our structure and how we build it, and then in our landscape and how we actually, you know, install it and maintain it. So I think, to me, that is a real important item that we haven't really addressed. I've done a little bit of research already, and like I said, I have spoke with a couple BAB members several times, and I think at our last meeting I mentioned, you know, I'm not trying to mix what the BAB should be doing with the Planning Commission, but we both agreed that, we're both bodies, that let's collaborate on this so we get it down and get it right. And at the same time, I don't want to, you know, penalize applicants, but I think it's really important to have it. So, I would say the Fire Safe Community. And then along with what Bobby brought up, and of course Steve, the parking, and I agree, and what we're doing in Complete Streets is, we have the master plan that got approved last fall by the city council. It's a living document, and we have a list of several things that we want to add, say like a guideline or a supplement. And I read it off before, but a couple of them, for example, are green street guidelines. So that's like low-impact development. We're doing more with stormwater capture and what have you. One of them happens to be parking. And that's basically, we're just dealing with parking in the public right-of-way. In addition, I know with planning, we have to deal sometimes with parking on private property and how that's going to work. And then as Steve said, there's, within Complete Streets, we're actually going out right now and we're using, actually, I have it with me, the, sorry about that, too much stuff here. This is the present overlay map, the public works printout. And I know it's hard to read, but there's a green one, and those are the streets that are designated for 2019. And we have come up with what we're calling a safe sidewalk program. But within that, we're going out physically on the street, and we're not only identifying the sidewalks, but anything else that could go on there. So for instance, today, we were on Bryant Street, and we wrote down, "Oh, no sidewalks, but hey, how come there's parking here and there's not parking there?" So we're saying we could add parking. So we're actively identifying that, and that's pretty much public right-of-way parking. So I wanted to say that, from that standpoint, we're pretty active in it. And I don't know if this is possible, and this is with the parking, I don't know if a matrix would help, or, I'm just, I was trying to think, like, how do we move forward with it? Like, in other words, here's the information, here are the guidelines, here are the ordinances, codes, what have you, so we can kind of look at it and then make a determination of like, well, how can we change it, or how can we move forward? How can we make it better? I mean, that's our ultimate goal. And then on the in-lu fees, you know, I know that comes up, and I think just for our own perspective, if we had, you know, a file or just showed, okay, here are the fees, this is where it goes, and certainly if we wanted to make comments or recommendations, we can.
Well, one of the things I thought about the in-lu fees is public parking. You know, that, to me, is the obvious place for it to go, you know? And so, and then what are the public parking options, identifying them? And right now, we don't have a clear identification of where that is and what that means. And that would be very important.
Right.
And so when we're, you know, giving people dispensations to not have parking, we, you know, we have a clear...
You know why we're doing it or not.
Yeah, a clear reason why, not just because.
Right.
And, you know, so...
And then as, one last thing, as Commissioner Quelisi mentioned, in addition to like car parking, we're looking at expanding bike parking. I don't know if any of you have noticed, there are more and more people out there on bikes, especially, you know, from the hotels and of course, local people. But if we can get more people on bikes, it's less cars. And, you know, where are the opportunities? So there definitely are places in town where the Public Works Department, and we've collaborated with Complete Streets, have identified public right-of-way places. You might have seen those green circular bike parking things. We're going to be adding more. And then certainly, when we have commercial projects, it's required, and it's something that, I know I brought it sometime last year, I didn't know this, I just happened to stumble upon it, but in our code, it says the commercial projects are required to do bike parking. So it should be, it should just be automatically in our conditions of approval. And it hasn't been, but I'm going to make the request that it is there. But once again, that's another alternative way for people to transport, get around, and then have parking also.
Yeah, on the list here, it also says the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Oh, maybe I didn't turn the page.
Yeah, and, yeah.
There's more.
And that has to do with Complete Streets. So I still think that that master plan is really, I think, really important.
Right. Thank you for...
That dictates also parking in some degrees, and, you know, there's some roads that really we need bike lanes on. I mean, I'm sure you're doing some of this with Complete Streets.
Exactly.
But there's a connection there, and I think a master bike, bicycle plan, I know that you talked about having a route from the east end to the high school.
Mm-hmm. That's in process.
And having it clearly identified to encourage more bike riding and things like that, so...
Right. And just one, actually, the master plan did get approved by city council last fall, and you can actually, you know, take a look at it, it's on the city website.
Okay, we have it. We have it.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, we have the policy and the master plan.
Oh, cool.
And then, I'm sorry, thank you, Chester, for saying flip the page, because I didn't... Actually, maybe I'll wait and let Ray talk and then pick up on the second page.
Thank you. Ray, that's your cue.
Got it. Thank you. Parking, yes. Bobby, thank you for bringing that up. You know, I was in a conversation with someone regarding parking, and I don't remember what it was, and they posed the question to me, you know, who has the most to gain from all the cars that are in downtown area? I said, "Well, what do you think?" And they said, "Well, it's the businesses. They're, all the cars are going to the businesses. So why don't the businesses come together via the Chamber of Commerce and buy a piece of property and build themselves a parking lot, because they have the most to gain from all the cars that are here?" I'm not condoning that or not, I just thought it was kind of thinking outside of the box that, you know, they said there's all this land on the east end, you know, just outside of town that could be purchased and made a parking lot, and then people can walk into town, or there'd be a fleet of bikes there for rental. So I just thought that was interesting as an idea. Bobby, you had your hand up, I'm, I'll chime in.
Well, I just want to say then, you should think twice about giving a variance to a new business who's going to have 110-seat occupancy, and they don't have to pay an in-lu parking fee. So there's a problem with that. And now, you know, from what I read, it says, "Well, they got a variance because other people don't have parking," and that means no one will pay anything for parking. So that has to be addressed. I also think that, yes, we should have parking areas, not necessarily all paid for by the businesses, but that it's part of the city plan, and that it's paid parking, and that you use your trolley service to get people from the parking into town. Because actually, businesses do better when there are fewer cars parked in front of them and when there's, the streets are, seem more pedestrian-friendly. You'll find that places where cities actually close down streets do much better. It's much more viable space than being on a busy street with traffic... It's much more viable space than being on a busy street with traffic going by, especially the motorcycles, the motorcycles that go by, they can't.
I was just going to comment and say that that's debatable. It's interesting, because a lot of studies have been done, that when you don't have any cars parked, or minimum cars parked in front of businesses, you know, it looks like they're maybe not doing as well. So people have a tendency not to go into them. But, and I could share some of that information or the documentation. But I could see that it could go both ways. And I'm not here to argue, but just to share that tidbit of information.
Yes, Bobby.
I also think that it would be good to talk about affordable housing and possible locations for affordable housing. And maybe take a look at the zoning on the east end of Ojai Avenue. It just seems like it's kind of desolate down there. And maybe we think about addressing that and how that area gets dealt with. I don't think it's, makes a whole lot of sense just to increase your commercial, you know, idea of having more businesses running all the way down Ojai Avenue without bringing in more people who can live here. Because it's only tourists, really, that support the businesses now. So unless there are more people who actually live here, work here, you know, they're really, just adding more businesses is not going to make sense.
Ray, do you have more to add?
I do.
Good.
I'm looking at, on page two, it says, "Implementation of Sustainability-Related Development Standards." For me, that's at the top of the list. Even though the word sustainability is kind of thrown around like the word organics nowadays. And, you know, depending on who you talk to or what company, it means something different. But to me, the word sustainability is the overarching umbrella of what allows us to, well, meet the general plan. What's stated in the general plan is to the culture and environment we want to live in. And then what we need to do now to ensure that's happening 50 years from now. Because I think I mentioned the last meeting, it doesn't seem like there's been any strategic design to the city in terms of planning or economy. It just kind of happened, like LA just kind of happened. And so we have our own mini sprawl here in some sense, with not a lot of strategic planning. So how can we look at sustainability-related development standards in all factions? Like, everything we're talking about goes under that. You know, for some people, the Thomas Fire didn't really affect at all in terms of their businesses or homes. It was more of an emotional impact. For some businesses, they're still scratching to get by and recover. For some people who lost their homes, there's still a lot of people that are displaced. So this word sustainability, that all feeds into this world sustain, you know, word sustainability of how we can rebuild in such a way that accounts for natural disaster, if you will. I'm looking at a document here on my phone, it's called "From Ashes to Opportunity." I posted it on Facebook and a few groups. And it's out of Santa Barbara, and it was written initially after the T fires. And it's called "Sustainable Rebuilding and Retrofitting After the Fires in Santa Barbara." And they're updating that document, and it's available online. And they really, you know, they had a whole council that they created of city leaders as well as community members who were experts in very specific fields of energy and landscape and water conservation, architects, and even insurance representatives on how do we rebuild and sustain and prepare for the inevitable, and whatever it might be. So for me, the community development department and staff could really put some research, if you will, into how other communities, you know, have approached this. We've talked a lot about on the council here, you know, different communities. Depending on the subject we're talking about, we go, let's look at Fresno, or let's look at San Bernardino. And, you know, like these communities come up, hey, look, there's already a model for this. Portland is brought up. You know, what aspects of these communities can be implemented here, either on the same scale or a smaller scale? And take the best of what's already happening elsewhere and not try to reinvent the wheel or overthink it, because they're done. And there's, you know, zoning regulations and ordinances and general plans that already exist with the type of language and culture and environment and opportunities and possibilities that we've been talking about for a long time.
Thank you.
Speaking on that issue, I think the challenge with that issue is identifying very specific things versus broad strokes. I think it's going to be difficult for the staff to then take, you know, the whole subject and without having more of a concise plan for implementation. And the reason being is, we don't have a lot of development here in Ojai. We're just, we don't have the land for it. So what specifically would we be asking staff to do? You know, that would create a plan of sustainability? Would be the question I would ask. And I would really want to get real clear on that. Because the broad stroke, yeah, that's already done in many communities. But what specifically could benefit us here in Ojai in the condition that we are at zero growth, you know, pretty much, very, very low growth?
Well, if I were to microscope it, and I totally agree with you. Rather than development, I would substitute the word allowances, you know, and allowing for some things that haven't been allowed to be permitted or zoned, because the ordinances aren't there. So for instance, in terms of building, there's straw bale, there's Cobb, there's super adobe. There's various kinds of tiny homes, although, you know, to me, tiny homes are pretty conventional. So that's a conventional build to me. It's a wood structure, it's framed, it happens to have wheels. But, you know, it's, they haven't reinvented the wheel with a tiny home. And in terms of a village, well, that's a tribal model, which is fantastic. Because it creates strong bonds, a strong relationship, and interdependencies that are really healthy. So I, you know, specific would be some kind of eco-village. But I could see that those kinds of villages on city land have allowances for other types of structures and building materials that are tried and proven. If you just came back from the Middle East, you probably saw a lot of Cobb happening there. They've been there for hundreds of years, some falling apart, but some in fine condition. And in Europe, you know, Cobb and has, a lot of the homes have been there for a really long time. So I think, so to be specific, I could see some alternative materials being allowed, some beta tests, whether we use the Sustainable Living Research Initiative to study and collect data, or we use data that's already been collected from that. So that would be a specific, because when we talk affordability, I love the idea of tiny homes. I don't think they're affordable, but that's mostly because not everyone's a builder. Whereas with a Cobb structure, although you do need an architect and someone who knows how to build it, it's more of a barn raising where you can have, you know, community members or a whole group of friends to come and make Cobb, and then have someone who oversees the whole project as a project manager. And you can build a home, and a much larger home, for about this same amount of money. And you're right, you can do a barn raising with any kinds of materials. I'm just an advocate of using the earth under our feet, or straw bale. I just found out that rice straw is what's being used by a lot of people in California. Because evidently, there's a lot of rice grown in Northern California. And the rice straw doesn't hold moisture as much, so it's drier, it's got a higher silica content, and it's readily available, just several hours north. So that's something specific I could, you know, I'm advocating for. And, you know, I even, I sent the council an email about a green building conference coming up the weekend after next that I plan on attending and learning as much as I can about that and from policymakers that are going to be there. I know there's an eco-village Cobb project happening in Berkeley that's been permitted. And so I'm having, I have my eye on that. And, you know, as you know, I've moved into town here, and I was living in the mountains. And the, after the fire took my home, I found a place right down the street. And stormwater capture, water in general, is very high on my list. What I noticed riding my bike around, just how much cement there is. And all cities have a lot of cement, but, you know, I was living out, really out on the edge. And I just had one small piece of asphalt and everything else was, you know, was soil. So specifically, I really want to somehow, and this is more in, you know, Kathy's expertise, where can we start collecting, taking cement out, making more permeable surfaces, sinking? I get the groundwater basin has, isn't infinite. The groundwater basin is finite, so it fills up rather quickly. And then there's, you know, too much water, it becomes, can't store all the water. However, it can be used somehow.
Go ahead.
No, I'm complete, thanks.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, so I'll just kind of tag on and compliment what you were saying. I too think that the sustainability should be kind of the overarching umbrella of everything we do. Because affordable housing falls, I mean, the three legs of sustainability, and I know it's an often-overused word, but it's the environment. There's a social component, there's an economical component, or an economy component. So housing falls under that. How we address our land, which would be like the stormwater capture, the landscape ordinance, and just pretty much about everything else we do. Because even like with parking and traffic, that has to do with air quality. So when you kind of put it all together, if that's the approach that we took for pretty much everything, I would be in favor of that. I also wanted to comment on, I had circled and made a note about the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. This was something, you know, we had a presentation last year. But I feel is a possible good way to implement things that are not in the code presently, that I think should be tried. They need to be safe, you know, there's a health, safety, and welfare component, absolutely. And I'll just mention again what it is. It's an ordinance, or they call it an initiative, where somebody comes in, if, let's just say, assume I got adopted. You pull a permit like anyone else would do. But you're doing something that's not presently in the code. And there's two tracks. There's a planning track, which is kind of more zoning in our neck of the woods here, our realm. And then there's also like a building and safety. So that would be like methods and materials. And basically, when you're pulling your permit, you align with, and you have, let's say it's a contract on your permit, that you've aligned with, say, a nonprofit or even like a university. So let's say it's, you know, UCSB or Cal Poly, or maybe it's the Green Coalition, or some nonprofit that's doing sustainable something. But they have the expertise. And essentially, when you pull the permit, you're doing a pilot or a test project. And let's just say it's adobe, for example. And you want to do cluster housing, for example. So two things that are presently not in our code. You have a proposal, what it is, you have to submit all that. Things are going to be checked and monitored. And basically, it allows you to test as you go. So in other words, you just don't do it, and then just sit back, and then just say, oh, it didn't work, so that's the end of it. It allows you to actually, within that pilot project, have the ability to, I like to say the word, write something if it's not working correctly. So to a degree, there's a little bit of experiment. But at the same time, you want to make sure that you're meeting, you know, the safety and the health, safety and welfare, and all of that. At the, you know, after a certain period of time, whatever the designated time is, you have all this data that's been collected, and it could be turned into the city. I know this is a little work. You would actually have a committee that would help monitor this through the process. But it's a way to test something that's not here. And it's something like for fire, or, you know, ease of building or economy, that we might say, we really do want adobe. Or we really do want cluster housing. And that's almost like what we're talking about with the tiny home on Wheels Village. Or even just, you know, more than one house on a property, maybe they're smaller. But it allows more people to have ownership and, you know, affordability and what have you. So I personally would like to add it to our list, and I think it falls in with the sustainability component.
Add what to our list?
The Sustainable Living Research Initiative, SLRI. And then I just wanted to see if I, well, I'll leave it at that, I'll wait for more comments.
Okay.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying there, is that that's very specific, a very specific goal that I think staff could concentrate on and be clear about. The overall sustainability issue is big. You know, it's a big thing, and it requires somebody to organize it into some kind of format that, you know, that's efficient, you know, as far as productive, is why we use. So that initiative, to me, is a good focus. Because it does solve a lot, it allows us to move ahead with a lot of, or potentially, some projects that don't, that aren't currently legal and able to move forward, which has a lot of sustainable components to it.
Right.
So to me, narrowing that down to that would be probably a good goal. And just keep it at that and not.
Get too big at this point?
Yeah, because we don't have a clear, I don't think we have a clear focus for the bigger one.
Right. The other thing I was going to mention is, a lot of communities have a sustainability, like an action plan or a climate action plan. And, I mean, basically, it includes, like, usually like housing and, you know, conservation, air quality, water quality, and it all gets kind of thrown in there. And it's kind of your master plan, so to speak. And then from there, but I think what you're saying is, let's just say they decided they want, I don't know if they want it. Of course, it costs money, you have to typically, I don't know if they would do it in-house or get a consultant. But there may be some key things that we would want to recommend to make sure they got in there if they decided to go in that direction. But it does, it is a document then that you can, you know, work from.
Right.
And then you can, you know, pull from it and prioritize and say, you know, we feel like these two or three items are the ones we really need to concentrate on.
And it gives a vehicle to do that type of experimentation. You know, the.
SLRI.
Yeah, the Cobb houses or whatever the concept is, which aren't technically legal right now.
Yeah, the straw bale is legal in the county of Ventura. Or it's in the code, in the code, building code.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Quilce, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to go back to the first page. It says, "Fire Safe Community and BAB." I think there's a Planning Commission aspect to that topic as well. And looking back to the joint meeting that the Planning Commission had with City Council back in January, I brought it up, I think Commissioner Nolan brought it up just the other night at the last City Council meeting. Afterwards, I spoke with the fire chief. And I said, "Do you know, or do you have access to data that will tell us whether the fire hydrants in town are working?" The last data that I've heard about came from the middle of 2014. And of course, there's a lot of anecdotal data around about fire hydrants not working, about the real reason for the flooding of the Playhouse downtown. was not so much the water main break as the fact that the valve that should have shut off the water main didn't work. And so the water continued to flow. Um, I think that we need to be able to get data specifically about water for fire suppression, but about, uh, safe, safe and sufficient supplies of water wherever they might be or not be in the city. And that, I think, should have, should be one of the factors that we consider when people propose to do development in the city. If there is not water available there, and, uh, one of the things that keeps coming up is, you know, the mayor lives right down Ventura, down the hill here, and there's a stretch of at least five or six hundred feet, probably more, all the way to the creek, where there are no water. No, there, there must be a water main, because people have water in their houses, but there's no fire hydrant. And so if the mayor's house catches on fire, the fire department's gonna have to come with a tanker. And I don't even know if we have one here. I know we have engines here, but I don't know that we have a tanker. And the mayor could be in real trouble if there's a fire. Other people could be as well. And I think that we need to put pressure on the fire department and on our water purveyor and our previous water purveyor to determine whether we know with any degree of specificity about the availability of water within the city limits for fire suppression. Secondarily, for simply maintaining human life. Uh, because both factors, I think, should play into requests for development or redevelopment. And we should be looking at different parts of the city. The Cal Fire Map came up before the BAB. And, uh, right now, it says, at the edges, the top and bottom edges of the city, there's some risk. And all the middle, it's no risk at all. And nobody really believes that, but I don't think anybody's looked very closely at it. And so I think there may be a play for this commission to work with the BAB on fire safety and, and water provision at the same time. And I think there's a role for the city council that we may choose to recommend to them in pressing the fire department and water purveyors to provide us with the data that I think could be critical in, in planning commission decisions on development issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't spoken on this subject yet, so I'd like to say, um, you know, the county is updating their, uh, master plan for 2020, and I think this, uh, maybe gives us a real opportunity to update our own master plan, which is now twenty-five years out of date. I mean, it's, it's been a nice master plan for twenty-five years, but it's an opportunity for us to create a new one, and I think the timing might be good. Along those lines, uh, people have been talking about this parking in Luffy. I think it would be fantastic to have a, an implementation plan. If, so people know if they're paying into this in Luffy, where is that gonna go? What, what do we intend to do with it? Because I've never heard anybody say what we're actually gonna do with that money, it's just sitting there.
Or how much there is, for that matter.
Or how much there is, that's a whole separate problem, but just, I don't think we have any kind of strategy for, um, what we would do even if we wanted to, um, increase parking. And that's pretty much it.
If I could just ask for a second, I, I'm glad you brought up the general plan, because as somebody who's just finished three weeks, that's, um, that would be number one on my list, though I know that's not a short-term thing. But I think that's why you've got such a range of issues, because your general plan's older. Some of your elements, I mean, when I see nineteen eighty-seven, because I know of the, uh, Implementation Progress Report just went out for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and there were a lot of things cited about what the city's done, and they're accurate, but also in my mind, they weren't implementing the general plan. There were things the city's done, but they've done independent of implementation measures in the general plan, because the general plan's so old. Some of the elements go back to eighty-seven, I'm thinking when Reagan's in his second term, that's old at this point. And a lot of the things, whether it's sustainability, which is obviously high on the list, and it is a very global topic, that's a great thing to have run through your general plan, because it touches on nearly all of your elements. I, I think it's true, Ojai doesn't have a lot of undeveloped sites or as much development pressure as other areas, but that can still also change. You're probably gonna see increased redevelopment. And having standards in place guiding like sustainable development practices and things running throughout, those policies will shape that redevelopment in your city. Whether it's new development or redevelopment, you need that. Parking issues, parking seems to be an issue everywhere. I would definitely wanna know more, like, what the perception is, but I definitely come away with the in-Luffy issue, and particularly if you don't know where in-Lufy's, what they're working towards. I mean, most cities I've worked in, you, you almost always have that option, but there's a fee based on a cost of construction to build some facility at some site that will serve the public. And so you, it's tied to something, it's not this vague, you paid a fee and at some future date we'll get parking, there should be a plan, I'm happy to ask and figure out. Is there one, what's the site? Is it structured parking, how did you arrive at the cost? If it's, yeah, so that one should be answerable. But, um, you know, I'm sitting here taking notes, and the first thing that's just popping into my head is, long-term, the general plan needs to be updated.
I concur, I, I agree a hundred percent. Like, with a general plan update, you can really incorporate a lot of these other issues in it. And it, even the neighborhood planning, you know, I mean, it really all falls under that in, in some respects. So, uh, I'm, I, I hear you, I'm a hundred percent behind that.
That, that is a long, long-term effort, updating the general plan, and amendments can be made in increments to the general plan. So if there's something specific we wanna focus on, um, that part can be updated.
I think it would be useful to have, sponsored by this commission here, a series of meetings, and we can structure them as workshops, invite the public in to talk about specific topics. And to the extent that they impact the general plan, then we can decide among ourselves whether we want to recommend specific amendments to the city council for the general plan. And we're talking not just conservation, but there's a circulation element, there's an air quality element.
Affordable housing, isn't that part of it, isn't?
There's a housing element, certainly.
Affordable housing, yeah. A lot of things fall under the category.
And safety element, yes. Which is a lot of what you're touching on.
And certainly, complete streets falls into that area.
Right, so that could be a good format to go through and to take on these other issues within that larger format. And while, so we're accomplishing two things in, in one, at one time. Updating the general plan and we're dealing with some of these, these issues as amendments.
Luke recommended that we look at the solar issue at our next meeting, under those guidelines, as, you know, how they relate or don't relate to the general plan. So I think it's good to do it sort of as we have a topic, we see, well, what does it say? Well, does that still make sense?
Right, but have a little bit more of an organized way to update it as we go versus just discuss it and let it just kinda disappear. You know, so if it does come up, like the solar ordinance or something like that, we could have some kind of system where, where we vet something out, then it goes to updating as an amendment, you know, of the general plan. So we're updating the general plan as we go, and we're not just kinda talking about it and letting it die and die on the wayside after we've vetted it all out.
Right, 'cause I, I just, I mean, your general plans, your guideline and your ordinances and your design guidelines, all those things should flow from your general plan. And a lot of, if you're starting sort of ground up, I, you can do it that way, I just don't think it's the way to do it, 'cause you're essentially trying to work around not updating your general plan.
And you're creating discrepancies from the general plan.
And you sort of butt your head, it just, it just hit me in going through that report too, that, you know, when you're looking at an annual report saying, well, what did you do to implement the things you said? And the things that are in your general plan are now thirty years old. You've moved on, I mean, you're doing things that are affecting reality today, and they're good things to do, but they're not necessarily implementing what you said in nineteen eighty-seven. And nor should they be at this point.
I, I see Luke taking copious notes over there, and I think that's a great thing. I'm not sure he could keep up with all the discussion, I know I couldn't, trying to take notes on all of it. But I would suggest that perhaps each of us might write down and email to the chair, here are five things I would like to see, or to share, eh, but since the chair and the community development director devise the, the substance of the agendas, I think that's where it needs to eventually come to rest, so that you can sort out the ambiguities, the redundancies, and take one or two topics every meeting, and let's just go attack these. I noticed that our future calendar is empty right now, so we oughta be hitting a bunch of this stuff.
Tiny homes will be back in May, which I don't know which day.
Back in May.
But the goal is to get back to city council in June. I know we had Waterwise discussion a couple of weeks ago, which was supposed to come back, like, as a workshop, um, Waterwise, I think, was targeted for the eighteenth of April. So, um, but I think what would be helpful too, is that's a good suggestion that if people pick five priorities, three priorities, whatever they are, and they're showing up repeatedly on this, from the same people, that's obviously indicating a top priority. What would be helpful for me is when people say, "Parking's an issue," I'd like to know why. Lack of it, lack of it in certain places, in-Lufy's, uncertainty about where in-Lufy's go. Um, or from a design standpoint, that you'd like more parking in the main street, 'cause it creates a barrier, I mean, parking's such a catch-all, I come in and say, almost everywhere I've worked, people don't think there's enough parking. So it's helpful to know, when you say parking, what specifically? Is it lack of bike parking? You know, um, so it'd be helpful to know, even within parking, what are the perceived deficiencies with how either the city works or how the code is written related to parking?
I got my list done. It's all here. Send it off.
So we just covered future agenda items, is that? We're moving on to our. I don't know. Do you guys like to comment? Come on up. You get, you get another three minutes if you wanna do that. We can allow it. I mean, we have this. We have a lot of talent here.
I just wanted to say about parking. Our family walks a lot, and because of our business, we're in and out of town quite a bit. And one thing that we've noticed is that people who work in the stores park in the premier parking spots that would be servicing their customers. And then their customers have to go and search, 'cause we recognize the cars. Go and have to search, it's really bad out at the Y, where, where people who work, say, at Vons, park right near Vons and come out at their break, or come out to have a snack at lunch, and it's one of the spots right in front of the store. I just don't understand that. And it does happen behind the arcade quite a bit, so.
Thank you. All right, um, I guess we can move on to our planning commission reports. Um, Commissioner Corbin, did you have a report on the city council meeting?
Yes, city council meeting. There was a presentation by Richard, and I can't pronounce his last name, from the Water Advisory Board. Heyes? Okay. And, uh, he gave a very good and complete presentation on the, their, the Three Sister Plan. Uh, we talked about that a little bit. I think one of the things that I hadn't realized, um, before was that the intention is not to store state water in the lake, it's to use the state water for water consumption as you go. So the lake refer, refers to what it originally was, was a reservoir, and we can allow it to refill, um, so that we do have backup. We've apparently, uh, seventy, seventy-two million dollars has been paid so far for state water since Casitas was established. And not a drop has arrived.
Seventy-two million?
Seventy-two million dollars. And there's just a feeling that there, Casitas has, doesn't feel an urgency to deal with this issue. And, and it is urgent. And, um, it was determined that, uh, Cuyugis is doing a study, a feasibility study for what direction they're gonna go. And we have about six months to get Casitas on board with this. At, if that doesn't happen, they'll go in a different direction. And then it'll just get a lot more expensive for us and more dire. So i- it's pretty important, and, um, that was the water presentation. There were a couple of other issues. One was about the annual housing report, that is not annual, it's every once in a while. Second issue talked about was tiny houses. And, um, there really are a lot of questions about the tiny house issue. Um, and there was some comment about, well, we certainly don't want three-story apartment units. And I'm thinking, maybe we do. I mean, take it, we don't have much land, we need density, and we need housing units. Imagine it not like a ghetto project, imagine it, use the imagery of a, of a beautiful hill town, and you're gonna ma, build it in architecture. In other communities, when they do affordable housing, if you're gonna just plunk down little individual units, they're not gonna be affordable. There needs to be a certain density. And then you free up the land, and then the land can be something wonderful. So I, I think we really need to change our mindset. I'm not quite sure how many more housing units the state wants us to have, but it's a lot. And we need to look at available pieces of land, what could potentially be there, and make it worthwhile, if it's gonna be an outside developer, for them to actually come and do a project. And we can set the standards of what this thing looks like. It doesn't have to be more expensive to be aesthetically pleasing. Third unit, third issue was rebalancing the city council. And apparently, of the five seats, four will be up for reelection. And I think the thing that's unbalancing it is the two-year term of the mayor. And, um, so Susa Francina will be the only council member who will remain on the council. And I guess there's some concern, 'cause she's not all that experienced. So, um, there were some iss, some possibilities thrown about, which was to make the mayor's term four years, or to get rid of the mayor, or, and just, just have it rotation, um, as we used to have it. And then an iss, an interesting discussion arose about the position of mayor, that the mayor has more responsibility but no power. So, it's kind of a, and it's two-year terms, so like, what's the point? So that really needs to get some thought. And then the last thing that they talked about was, um, really having a call to action for the state water project. Can you explain to me what E I R is, maybe you know? Oh, okay, all right. Anyway, um, that, that, I think that is gonna get put on the city council agenda. And, oh, yes. Last, there was the cannabis issue. The three dispensaries are not doing as well as they expected, because they're only allowed to sell medical, and you have to have a card, and you have to have an appointment twenty-four hours in advance. And there is a question about the fact that it is legal to buy and use marijuana now in California, and you don't need to have a medical card. The difference is, if it's medical marijuana, you don't pay tax on it. And nobody really seems to care about that, actually. So the suggestion was to allow the three medical marijuana dispensaries to also sell recreationally. And, um, but they have to, they have to do medical. And then the question came up, why? So that's that's kind of was the, the gist of the conversation. And I think it's one of those topics that there's a lot of baggage on it. And it's going to take a while for everybody to move through that baggage. And to look at marijuana in a whole different way than it has been looked at previously. And honestly, I have to say that the state of California boggles my mind so often. And the fact that they came up with a certain policy, but then every city has to determine how they do theirs. I think it's kind of crazy. I think it would have been really wonderful if the state put together a, a panel of people who were experienced in all different areas of marijuana, from growing it to financial people, to law enforcement people. And come up with a framework for how cities were to do this because we don't know how to do that. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, but, so that's, anyway, that was the, um, oh, and then an interesting thing is that the people who already paid twelve thousand dollars for their medical permit will have to pay another twelve thousand dollars for their recreational permit. Now, Bill Wirek made a comment, which is absolutely true, which is the thing that makes things unaffordable here is the cost of land and the cost of regulation. And since we know that regulation makes things ridiculously expensive, I have to ask, and I, and I do ask, you hear me ask this a lot when we talk about things. Why don't we, I mean, we have to take that into consideration. When we decide these issues, we put all these parameters on it and they make everything so wildly expensive that it is beyond the scope of the normal person. And I think it's really important to keep that in mind and to realize what makes sense and what doesn't. In some instances, we don't have a choice because the state mandates certain things. But when we do, as a city, it would be great if we, and I, I think this is another important issue, is to look at our permitting and regulation. When you go to get a permit in this city as an individual, you cannot get a listing of what it's going to cost you. The response I get is, well, I, I can't tell you that. You don't know if you can afford it when you start the project. And that, that's wrong. It should be very upfront. If there's a formula for how things are determined, you should know what that is so you know what your project's going to cost you. Otherwise, you'll get in the middle of it and you'll say, Jesus, I can't even finish this thing. Oh, well, you can only get one extension. Great. So, uh, you know, we, that's, that's a really big issue. And that's.
Thank you very much. City Council's reason plus. Um, Commissioner Nolan, do we have a Complete Streets?
Yes, we do.
We just met this afternoon.
We just met this afternoon, hot off the press. And, um, we just, I wanted to say, I've announced this before, but Complete Streets is going to have a presence at Ojai Day, which, oh, excuse me, Ojai Earth Day, which will be at Libby Park. That's April twenty-first from eleven to four. Oh, it's been five?
Yeah, in an hour.
Yeah, in an hour. Okay, let me strike that, four to a five. So if anyone happens to come, please stop by and say hello. Um, we also went over our bicycle safety brochure, and I might just hand this over to Commissioner Quilosi, who has wonderfully put, um, a draft together, but today we reviewed it. I'm going to quick show it and Steve, please, if you want to, you know, explain anything more than I'll just do a little brief presentation. So I'll, this is something we've, we talked about several years ago and we decided to put this together. Mostly because we, we do have people that come to Complete Streets, or I have people that call me as the chair. And, you know, we hear comments around town that the bike riders are crazy. They don't follow the rules and blah, 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 blah. And part of Complete Streets is, one of the many things of Complete Streets is, you know, making the roads accessible for bike riders. So we decided to put together a brochure. Once again, it's a draft. So the front is basically, it's a three-fold. Kind of the title, you open it up. Now, this is just a page out of our master plan that was just approved. But we might have it, um, you know, modified and, um, what have you, ever graphic artist who's going to maybe play it up a little bit. And then, um, the next section would, is bicycle safety laws. And this is probably the thing that most people see the most. I, I ride my bike too, but, and I will say that I see a lot of bad bike riding in Ojai. And we're getting more and more riders, which is great, but we want to make sure everybody's safe. So basically, we have some items, I'm not going to read them all, but from the California Vehicle Code. We also have items from our Ojai Municipal Code. For instance, in some communities, you can ride a bicycle on a sidewalk, but in the city of Ojai, you, you may not. I shouldn't say may not, you shall not. And then, and then some general things. And this is, you know, about, um, you know, wearing a helmet, hand signals. And you're supposed to get off your bike when you cross the street in a crosswalk, that type of thing. And then on the back page, we have resources. So we have, like, say, the Chamber of Commerce. Um, once again, this is a draft, so, you know, we're going to change it. But we also have a lot of the hotels. We have the Caravan Outpost on here. I'll have to ask for your permission on that jet. Oh, you didn't hear. I said on the back of our bike brochure, we have resources for bicycle riders. And now a lot of the hotels are offering bikes, which we think is great. And we did put you on the back. Of course, we'll ask you for your approval.
Verbal permission on that.
Oh, you got the permission already. Okay, good. So, yeah, Steve did a great job. But, um, yeah, and so ideally, what we'd like to do with this, we were hoping to have it ready for Earth Day. I, I don't think we will, but um, we'd like to be able to have these at City Hall, um, you know, the library, other kind of public places in town. Also to be able to hand them out at the Caravan Outpost, to the Ojai Valley, and anyone where they're doing, um, you know, bike rentals or bike use. Same thing with the, um, the bike shops. And then, and possibly even have them with the school district. Um, and in addition, Steve is, this is going to be for, um, uh, Earth Day. We're hopefully going to have copies of the California, the DMV has a, um, a really good, kind of a trifold with more safety and laws and what have you, but more in-depth than ours, because ours is more local. And also from the national, um, what's, what was the, our other document?
National Highway Traffic Safety Administration.
Yeah, so we're, we're, Steve's going to contact them and we're hoping to have that at our table at Ojai Day. So we have, you know, something to share with people that's positive. So that's in process. And then, um, the other thing that we did, I mentioned earlier on, I don't, I'm not going to go over the whole thing, but we're going through all the two thousand and nineteen street overlay addressing those streets. Today, we were at North Bryant Street doing that. And then there's something else that I, I'm going to ask and maybe kind of for direction. In our Complete Streets group, you know, essentially we're like an advisory board. Our staff person, um, initially was from the, our planning director. But the last several years when we started doing this master plan, the Public Works Director has been our staff person. I'm just filling you in a little bit. And, um, I, so I'll ask you, I think I CC'd you on the last agenda, but would you prefer to be, or would you like to be, um, included in that?
I, I definitely would.
I would seem, yeah. And I did put John on there too, because I haven't done that, but if, I think, because I'm not doing any Brownex stuff, that's fine. And he's the chair. But here's, this is my question. So within Complete Streets over the years, we've been operating since two thousand and ten. I'm just going to let you, I'm informing you. So we helped, um, write the policy, the Complete Streets policy for the city. Recently, the master plan that was just adopted last fall. In addition to doing a lot of other things, uh, we did all this data collecting that we handed over to the consultant who's doing our neighborhood planning. We've gotten like bike racks. We're doing stormwater capture now and on the, on the bike trail and all kinds of stuff. That's it in a nutshell. But we often have items that come up repeatedly, almost like what we did tonight. And, um, I kind of want to make sure, I want to make sure I'm doing the right process or protocol. These are things that I, I want to bring back to the Planning Commission, but then my question is, do we make a recommendation to city council to get buy-in from them? Or does it go to the city manager, or would I bring it to the Public Works Director? So I'll give you an example. Tonight, we talked about parking. One of the three items that I wanted to bring tonight was, and we've talked about this repeatedly in, um, our meetings. Could we add parking to the north side of Ojai Ave, Ojai Avenue, starting at Ventura Street, which is just right, right out here? Take it to Kenyatta. And I will say, when I moved to Ojai in nineteen eighty-two.
Wouldn't that be nice?
There was parking there. And I did, I contacted Caltrans about this quite a few years ago. I still have the document, the email. And they said, oh, that's up to the city. They, you know, because Caltrans, that is a state highway, but I did contact them because we've worked with them in conjunction with them with Complete Streets. So I wanted to say that. And then the parking would, but once again, on that side of the street would pick up about twenty feet west of the, um, I think that's, um, Kenyatta, where the Clough Vista Park is. And then we could add parking all the way to El Paseo, which is kind of across the street from Boku. I'm not sure if you know where that is. It's right before you get to the Y. I know you're new. I'm throwing out these, these, you know, local terms here. But, and then we have a reason for this. Once, for one thing, we're adding more parking. Another thing, um, I love the idea about closing off streets, but we can't do that on, on Ojai Avenue. And parking actually helps to slow down the traffic. And, and you're providing parking, which we're hearing that we have a lack of.
Couldn't we make a bike lane instead?
Well, I also wanted to throw into the mix that the city does have the ATP grant that they're working on right now. And there will be, um, bike lanes on a good portion of Ojai Avenue, except for downtown. The immediate arcade kind of area because the street narrows right there. So it would something to get thrown into the mix. Steve, it looks like you might want to add to that.
Well, I, rather than having parking all the way up and down every single street, I think it'd be nicer if we had it in certain areas.
Well, that's what I'm just talking, yeah, it's a specific area. But it's one of the things that it just, it repeatedly over the, quite a few years keeps coming up. So I'm, I'm kind of looking at, just making sure that, what's, what's the protocol for us to get this out to whoever it needs to go to? To prioritize or, you know, get an answer back for something. We're not saying you, the city has to do it. We're making a recommendation.
Could I ask about your, the Complete Streets Committee? So when you talk about items like this and you say you have a recommendation, who would that body typically then report to? I mean, you say the Public Works Directors on it, but.
I, I come back to Planning Commission and I do a report and like, if we want to do, you know, like, I had brought this up along, probably two years ago, about doing the, um, that, for instance, and anything else. And the same thing with the master plan. Um, I actually went to, I came to Planning Commission and asked, um, you know, got approval, and then I went to city council and asked if we could do it. Providing we provided our own funding. But anyway, that aside. So that was one of the items was the, that, that parking in particular. The other thing that we looked at is right in downtown, across the street from the arcade, the, um, where the pergola is, President Pergola. So if you would, went east of the, um, post office, right in front of Libby Park. It's, it's red right now. There's no parking there. And we were looking at, could that be, um, bike parking? A bike parking zone. So you, you wouldn't, because bikes are somewhat transparent. I mean, you can see through the, you know, the, the frames and the wheels. And they're not that high. That was something we're proposing that we'd like to see happen. Now, we know that we've got this ATP grant in process. It's going to be still a little while before it gets implemented. So what we're looking at with these projects is, could they be a pilot project, something we do until that ATP grant gets, um, established? And I think the beauty of it is, is we're testing something that we're hearing we need from the public and other commissioners. And it's parking, one of them's bike parking and one of them happens to be car parking. You know, how do we, who do we give our recommendation to? And then the third item that we looked at, and this is a very old item, probably from twenty years ago, and it repeatedly comes up into, um, Complete Streets. And I know the city actually has funding for this project, but it's to address the issues at Summer Street, Signal, and, um, Le Grand ties into it. And, um, we just wanted to put that out as if, if we had to prioritize a big, a project, that would be the next one that we would want to happen. Steve?
Traffic, a traffic project, certainly, yeah.
Right. And we've actually, the city actually has done, we've had, um, uh, an engineer. We have some dr, uh, concept drawings of how to address it.
During our master plan.
Right. And I realize that me, we're not saying that it has to be done, you know, immediately, but we would like it to, if possible, just make our recommendation that it would be the next large Complete Streets project, knowing that it has funding and of course, its staff has time. But if we had to prioritize, that would be one of them. And then the two, um, pilot projects would happen to be the parking on the north side of Ojai Avenue and the parking right in front of Libby Park where it's now a red zone. So, I hope that wasn't too much information.
Thank you. Corbin, do you have a, we had a question here, I think, earlier. Bobby, did you have a question for, no, okay. And Mr. Connelly?
Okay, I could just take a shot from other, other places I've worked. So a lot of what you said, I would actually think, since it involves public rights away, obviously, but probably some private property as well. It would seem like that some of those issues would actually come before this body for a recommendation. I mean, I would think that would be a logical next thing that you're, what your committee talks about. If you have consensus on that committee, it would come here. Certainly, this could be initiated, especially if you have a Public Works Director as part of your committee, through either staff at a department level or through the Planning Commission, but ultimately, these things sound like city council decisions. And quite a few of them also sound like things that would get folded in if you're going to actually do them, if you had approval, to fold them into your capital improvement program, like you're talking about changing, right, changing parking. So you would then actually be getting budget estimates and getting it on a calendar and prioritizing it. So those, to me, would be your typical options for these types of things. You know, and obviously, if you want to do it, funding becomes the big question. Some of these, those sound like you're working within a right-of-way and essentially re-establishing parking. Um, you do raise an issue because I know other cities I've worked in where you have what functions as a main street and it also happens to be a Caltrans highway.
Which is our case.
That can be problematic. Maybe it works better, but I, I can think of things like El Camino Real running through the Bay Area. Almost every city's had visions about what they want to do with it, and Caltrans has typically been an obstacle to modifying the streetscape. Even though it really doesn't function like a highway anymore, it's a highway. So, um, though it sounds like you had some conversations about parking, I know I have had conversations with them in the past where they say it's up to the local government, but we retain right to veto, so to speak. But you clearly have to factor them in with any changes to parking and how vehicles move. Certainly striping bike lanes. I don't know the width of Ojai Avenue. When I look at it, if you want to maximize on-street parking and put in bike lanes, that might start getting problematic. You certainly slow people down. But also, I know you have the issue, if you don't put bike lanes in and you're getting increased biking ridership and people are opening doors into bikes, that's an issue. It's a great buffer for pedestrians to have cars on the street, but I'm telling you issues I think you already know, but I would see kind of vetting these ideas going up, that it should go from your committee to probably this body here. You're the land use recommending body.
In the area of, of the bike parking where Kathy was talking about using that space right in front of the pergola across the street from the arcade that is currently not used for anything. for anything. It is the old parking lane that has simply been walled off, painted red curb, and it's not used at all right now. If, if you understand whether or not Caltrans would, would be susceptible to a repurposing of that currently unused space on the highway without obstructing the normal flow of traffic, because it's in a parking area, it's in a parking lane, I guess you'd call it. Would there be a problem if we put bike parking there? By the way, on this little brochure, I called all around, and it was of great interest to me and it may be to the public as well. The Inn, the-
Let this?
Yeah.
Let me just, refresh.
The Inn, the Caravan Outpost, and three other hotel-type establishments in town provide bicycles to guests that are staying there. So some people come to town and they have a rack and they have bicycles on the back of the car. Other people may want to come to town and just ride around, because it's a lot of fun riding around Ojai. But there are at least five places in town where you can stay and the proprietors will have some number of bicycles available to guests. And I noticed, we walked today, as we were surveying Bryant Street, we went down Ventura to the bike trail, all the way over to Bryant Street, up to Ojai Avenue, and then came back. And we must have seen half a dozen or 10 bicycles that were identifiable, either as the turquoise from the Caravan Outpost or white bicycles from the Inn. It was a surprising, to me, surprising number of people who were local hotel guests that had borrowed bicycles from the proprietors. And I think we will see more and more of that if we are only able to make the town a little more friendly to bicycle riders. So, thank you.
Thank you.
May I say something on the heels of that?
You may.
Riding around almost every day on my bike, I see a lot of visitor bicycles, because you can't identify, you know, which ones are from where. And they do ride on the sidewalk. And I'm guilty of that, too, because, you know, my, my regulation is, I shall not endanger myself, thus I will ride on the bicycles, and should ride on the sidewalks in certain areas, because I don't trust the drivers on certain parts of the street. And so I'm, I'm going to ride where I shall need to, given that time. So I, I did want to mention that. You know, I kind of cringed when I heard, when you just mentioned parking up by Clough Park and all of that. Not because it wouldn't be accommodating, just aesthetically, you come down that hill from the Y and immediately you just start seeing cars parked on the street. It's not a very welcoming sight into a city, even though it's convenient and it's accommodating for parking.
The worry for a lot of us is that as you're coming down that hill, you're going 45 to 50 miles an hour, and you hit the other side of Bank of America, and suddenly there's a 25-mile zone.
Well, Chester had an idea several months ago to, to approach Caltrans, to bring that speed limit sign closer to the Y.
I, I in fact asked a member of City Council, not the one present here tonight, if it was possible to change the speed limit sign that is just to the east of Bristol on Ojai Avenue.
Yeah.
Can I, can we put, okay, so the speed limit is 35 there.
Right there.
And that's what it says. But there's no other speed limit sign till you're all the way down the hill, around the curve, and you're hitting, not Kenyatta, but you're already at Blanch, before you see a 25 sign. So could we at least put a sign there, instead of saying 35, at least say 25 zone ahead? Somebody might notice, I don't know. It can't be any worse than it is right now.
So you're suggesting parking over by Park Clough-
So what happens if you just put the sign there?
On the north side, yes. Will it slow traffic down coming west?
Any, any visual impediment that, you know, if, if the street were 100 feet wide, people would be going 80 instead of 45 or 50. And so the more that you narrow a street, at least visually, and that's part of what these curb extensions are all about, and putting plants out there, whatever, it makes the street seem narrower and people will naturally slow down out of a sense of caution. Some more than others, obviously, but the effect really is real.
I don't know that we need to debate this whole thing here tonight, but it would, it would be a long debate. I believe we've covered all that. I think we're ready for our City Council representative.
Where do we start?
Thank you for your patience tonight, Randy. You sat through the whole meeting here.
You know, first of all, Luke, welcome to Ojai. And, and what I've heard tonight, I'm glad you're here. I heard a lot of things. In fact, I wrote down pretty much everything you guys talked about regarding your topics. What I, my suggestion, well, instead of repeating them back to you, like I said, I have notes on everything. But I think there's, two things come to mind, and it's the top of my list here. Character of Ojai. So anytime that there's a thought process about changing the character of Ojai, I think the practice has to be communicate, communicate, communicate. And that's to the public. So all of the questions that you're asking about, the chain of command, or how do we do this, I would start with the fact that the Planning Commission, the Parks Commission, HPC, all of the commissions are an opportunity to vent or vet changes or conditions or problems or concerns within our community. Subcommittee's are an actual act of looking at a specific problem. So when a subcommittee comes back to their Complete Streets, making a recommendation, okay, you have vetted it, you've looked at it, you've gathered the information, now you bring it back, back to Planning. And then Planning in turn agendases it. The community can recognize, well, they're going to talk about curb extensions. And then from that meeting, your director is then going to write a report, and then that's going to be sent to the council, and then that in turn is another opportunity to have a discussion and to communicate to the, to the city and to the citizens. So I think that's the whole process. So I think if we all remember that, that, that that's what our role is, and I even believe that as a councilperson, that our role is to actually, when we're up here, is to be there to listen and to take into all of the conversation that's going on in this community. And then hopefully, in some instances, the five of us have to make a decision, and in some instances, some people feel like they win in that and some people feel like they lose in it. But the reality is, you're trying to do what's best for the community, and you've given the community a lot of opportunity to discuss it. So that's the character of Ojai and public communications. The other thing is utilizing other resources within our community. So I really like this brochure about bikes. So where do bikes start? You got to educate children. That's probably your biggest bicycle user, that's when it starts. So who has the most impact with our, with our junior riders? It's going to be the schools, okay? It's going to be recreation and parks. Well, the parks has, I think, a mailing list of 10,000 people. So why aren't we getting this brochure to the Recreation and Parks Department and have them send it out? You know, so again, it's, it's recognizing who are our vehicles that are going to help us provide this education, or more importantly, the hard work that you do as a commission. How, how can we utilize the services that exist to help us communicate that? And I'm just, that just, as you were talking, that just came to mind. That's a huge resource. Have to put my glasses on, I had so many, so many things here. Okay, so someone talked about rain and numbers for our housing. There are roughly 346 is what we're technically supposed to require the space to build. We're going to have a discussion about that real soon, because the reality is, the City of Thousand Oaks got their rain and number down to, I think, 100 or 100 less. So how does a community as large as the City of Thousand Oaks have a requirement for housing less than, what did we say, 4.2 miles, square miles? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So what's happened in the past, we haven't had the ability to go fight. And we think Luke's going to be the guy that's going to fight for us, okay? And, and Luke's going to fight for us by us giving him the, the staff and, and the budget and whatever he feels necessary to go fight for this community. And, and that's one of the things that we need to do. And that's, again, that's why, when I heard you speak tonight, I, I just look forward to working with you. I look forward on a lot of these issues. Affordable housing. I just, this is my personal take, and sometimes I don't, I don't know if this, it's right for me to say this, because I could say it up there, but I don't think affordability can be built by the community. Affordability has to be built by your government. Your government has the, has the responsibility. First of all, it's in our general plan. We have to provide that, okay? If we own, the whole idea behind affordable housing and joint ventures, and Luke can, can help me out if I, if I need it, is the city's provided land and the opportunity. You do a joint venture with a developer and that person in turn who's built affordability and affordable homes, they then create an environment that creates that, that affordability. Homeowners don't create affordability. I'm sorry, we just, we don't. Capitalism says that if I invest in a piece of property, I want a return on it. I'm not going to give you a great deal if it doesn't fit my return. Cities can, can develop that. Cities can, right, and Chet was absolutely right. You can, you can create many environments where we can do that. And I think looking outside of the box on affordability is something that we should do. And I think that's something that this, that this commission should look at. So you guys were tasked with prioritizing, and everything that I saw on your priority list was huge. And I agree completely with you, Chester, on the fact that you can take a topic, and then what you have to do is you've got to narrow that topic down and actually look at what can you do as a commission specifically to, to break affordable housing down, or to break parking down, or to break traffic down. But you guys have to make that decision internally, and then what you need to do is specifically go at it. Now, there was a, a word kept coming up tonight, and I loved it, staff. That's staff. That's it. I'm, I'm serious. I mean, if I asked Luke what his staff was, he'd tell you, Luke, what is your staff?
It's very small. There's a part-time staff planner, we have some consultant services, but like pretty mu, there's an office that you have three people there, but only one at a time. And often, it's not filled. So it is small, and that's something I'm trying to get really aware of, is I, I look at all these things, and I know how long they take in almost any commu, like when somebody says general plan update, and then I see how engaged Ojai is. It's going to be a while, which I think it's probably the most important thing you have to do, but it's long-term and all these other things can't wait for that to happen. But yet, there's not a lot of bodies to throw at these things, and that's an issue.
My, my perception on how we're going to budget this year is going to be entirely different than what we've done in the past. I think we're going to actually ask each director, Public Works, CDD, Reckon Parks, to actually come back to us with some areas that they really feel they need funding for, versus us just throwing money at someone or, or putting it in the general fund and then having them write a request that, oh, I need $40,000 to do this study. We're going to be asking for this stuff upfront, so that we can actually budget for it upfront. So when you're creating your, your list of priorities, take that into consideration, I'm sure Luke is, take that into consideration, so that if we're going to do a general plan update, and we need $50,000 or $100,000 to do it, Luke's going to have to write that and make sure that we get it. And then if you guys prioritize, what was it, Kathy, your else, SLRI? If that's your next priority, then you better figure out how you're going to pay for that. And do you need a study? Do you need help? Do you need additional staffing? And we're in, what, April 4th? We're going to be starting budget talks probably the end of the month, if not May, June, they're due in July. So it's, so it's pretty short. You guys have a lot of work ahead of you. And then I'll, I'll cut my talk short. I just wanted to go back long-term, short-term. So long-term, term are these big pictures that you guys talked about, okay? The short-term, and I have a list of some short-terms that have, that have been handed down to me and I've discussed, these are things that have been on your table, let's call it, for two years. Okay? Some two years, some one year. But they've been things that I, that I believe, and it's not, I'm not, I don't want to sound like I'm pointing a finger at you. It's not your fault they're not done, but they're not done. And when something is, has been given to you to do, and it's been two years in the making and it's not done, and it's probably something that could be relatively short and quick and simple, the two people that I would look at in that instance, I would look at the chair and I would look at the director, because it's their responsibility to set the agenda, and it's their responsibility to follow through on direction that council has given them. So if we have failed to do that as, as a city in the past, I really look forward to Luke changing that, that, that paradigm, or, or changing that, the way we function and think. So I'm going to give you a couple of those short, the short ones that I see. And I'll give you some timeframe as when we asked for them. Fences, hedges, and wall code amendment recommendations, if any. We asked that two years ago. Two years ago. Missing lot coverage standards, July 27, 17. Correcting code contradictions, definition issues, window references to Title 10, more than a year ago. CDD intake forms, status reports, code compliance procedures, more than a year ago. Move the VMU zone to a special district zone category, October 2017. Design guidelines for areas currently not covered east of Montgomery slash commercial zones, November 2017. Waterway standards evaluating, evaluated according to cost effectiveness, first request about a year ago. So as a councilperson, when we sit back and we see that, that this commission has three canceled meetings in a row, and we see seven things that we've asked this commission to do, we kind of scratch our head. So that behooves the chair and the new CDD director to actually step up and recognize that when you're asked to perform a function or to do a study or to do anything from, from the council, that someone's just got to stay on it. And then that follows through on the same thing with, when we have these discussions, and they were huge tonight. You guys covered so much and you had so many great ideas, but now who's going to write that up? Who's going to follow up? And then who's going to prioritize it? And who's going to set those agendas? That's important, and that's where the chair comes in, and that's obviously where the director comes in. And, and I have a sense, I really do, that Luke is going to take us to that next level of, of managing planning and our building and safety. And I just, I feel so comfortable and I feel so good about that. And, and I hope, and I, you guys have done an incredible job in the past, and I'm just hoping that we step up and we meet Luke all the way and we do whatever we possibly can with him to just excel right now. And we have a lot of things on our plate. And I didn't even touch on water. I know, I won't even, I won't even go there tonight on water. We don't have to. We all recognize what water is, and it is scarce. Okay, so that's all I have, unless you guys want some clarity from Bobby's report. But I thought you did a pretty good job. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Henn. Any questions for Mr. Henn? All right, our meeting is adjourned.